I'd like to call the State City Council to be in order, please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some changes in addition to the agenda tonight. We are going to be deleting that proclamation on National Recovery Month and moving that to August, the next meeting. And under discussion, we're going to add a little update on the water plant and any other activities that occurred last week. So, does anybody else have any other changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Marle, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Rhodes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we start the business portion of the meeting, I have very sad news for our community. Our sister city, Brecken, their mayor passed away last week suddenly of a heart attack. And on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Celine, I wanted to share that with our community and express our condolences. And we are sending a letter of our condolences to the community of Brecken. We have a long and strong relationship with them as Mr. Roth is going to be presenting here shortly. And Mike was a great man and a great contributor to his community. He will be very much missed. So, we will be sending a letter today to them. Next, we have a presentation by Mr. Roth on our sister cities.
Good evening. Madam Mayor and council members and the general public. And what I want to present since this comes up is Sister City Program about Celine's involvement. Celine has two sister cities. If you come in from the east or the west on Michigan Avenue, you see the welcoming sign to Celine and points out her sister cities. You come in from the south, Celine Mylon Road, you see welcoming coming to the cities. Plus, Celine has been involved with the Sister City Program for some time. The whole thing about sister cities is... The whole thing about sister cities... The whole thing about sister cities is peace through people. This started back in 1956 under President Eisenhower. And Celine started, got involved with such a program... They got involved with the Sister City Program in 1966 when Mayor George Johnson signed the agreement with the consul people and the mayor of Brecken, Wales. It was found it was a good fit between the two cities. So, this matches 1956 when President Eisenhower started the Sister City Program. And there are more than 1,000 U.S. cities involved today. And Celine happens to have two. It was night, but... The original part came from a part of the National League of Cities. And it's 1967 is when the actual sister cities, international organizations started. So, it's been awhile for some time. And the whole thing is peace through relationships with people. A sister city and state relationship offers, it starts with a signing ceremony by the top elected officials, which I mentioned earlier, and the city consuls. So, I'm presenting this this evening to kind of refresh that Celine has been involved for many, many years. And this is a key year for us because there's quite an involvement with the sister, since we're going to be hosting a group from Lindenburg, Germany in September and a group from Brecken, Wales coming this October. And it'd be a good chance for you getting involved with it. How this works is volunteer organization. The whole thing happens, the people volunteer from their part to come over. We volunteer to go over there. And the mayor or honorary, is the honorary chair of the sister city groups. So, the mayor's always been a part of our executive committee ever since we've been in existence. And what had happened is, since our local governments cannot financially support paying for the visitors when they are here to be, to show the hospitality, our government is set up, isn't set up that way. Some of the foreign countries will have some aid that comes through the city governments so they can be host. But in our country, we can't. So, the organizations, the sisters, the Celine-Brecken Friendship Guild and the Celine-Lindenburg Friendship Committee was set up as independent organizations, nonprofits, so we can raise funds and that sole existence is to raise funds so we can host, be good hosts for the guests when they arrive. So, we've been in operation for quite some time for that. And we take that burden off of the city. There's many advantages far as being involved with sister city beyond just the citizen relationships. It gets basically as wild as you want to think. So, if you want many projects far as including healthcare, environment, arts education, economics, business and development, all of these kind of projects can take place. So, this is a platform for the cities to communicate with one another. The, along the arts lines, we've had arts exchange with the Brecken Group. They had, actually, back in the '60s, they had art exchanges that was, came from Brecken to Celine. And we've had the Brecken Choir come over, the youth choir come over from their church, from their school. We've had Musical Youth International make an exchange with them. And it was operated out of Celine. Our marching band went over to Wales. They brought some of their, a men's choir come over. There've been athletics exchange where we had a soccer group from them come over. And our soccer students went, teams went over there and played. So, we've had quite a bit of involvement with Brecken. So, more, more things can happen. So, the personal relationships forged through these community ties are enriching and beyond what one can imagine. I'm sure that all the youth that went over in the art exchange, I mean with the music exchanges, they totally enjoyed themselves and enjoyed the hospitality. The, I also want to mention the Celine Big Band went over to Brecken likewise. And so, there's been many, many exchanges through the years. And this is all started in 1966. So, it's time for anybody to come involved, all ages. And we welcome people to become involved with this type of activity. So, we're not a closed group. And we're open. We always would like to have more volunteers to help out. So, the purpose of the organizations is to increase community awareness of our heritage and improve international relationships. And that's both with Brecken and also Lindenburg, Germany. The missions are about the same except for it's to further promote interest of international understanding between the peoples of Brecken and of Lindenburg. So, our missions remain the same. And they have similar missions. The source of our funds come from membership and fundraising activities and donations. So, that's why we're in existence. And we're restricted for what we spend this stuff on, it's for this particular cause. And how you can join, well, you can join, goodness, they both jumped. And I have a piece of literature that's welcome to you folks. This piece of literature is back where you signed in and gives you the information for joining both of the, either of the groups or both of the groups. Here's where I mentioned far as was established in 1966 where Mayor George Johnson and George Anderson went during his time when he was mayor, he made a big promotion. And he'd visited actually with lots of people over in Brecken area as he was procuring land for Ford Motor Company. So, he established relationships there. And with Celine involvement with Ford here, made a great tie between those two cities. And it went beyond far as working with a few people. Arthur Bowley became quite involved at that time. And we have things named the Bowley Bridge here. And he was a very active person and really truly believed in the international friendship. Musical Youth International was the very first group from Celine to go over to Brecken. That's back in 1967. They operated right out of a place called White Acres. It's the first brick house going east out of Celine. Mrs. McCoy and Mr. McCoy, Lester McCoy, set up this group. If our, the group traveled various countries each summer. The Brecken, some of the activities of the Brecken Friendship Guild, whoops, is for some reason it wants to jump and advance on me. They enhance international friendship and they host visitors from Brecken, Wales. Visit Brecken, Brecken Night. So, we have, the fundraiser for them is Brecken Night and general membership. So, through the dinner that we have there, they earn in memberships. We accumulate monies in our treasuries. So, when they come to visit us over here every five years, we can give them a good time. This year, there's 19 guests from Brecken, Wales coming over. They arrive on October 11th and leave on the 25th. And we're providing, going to provide them a wonderful experience. And I will be showing some of their schedules and encourage if you want to get involved in volunteering and wanting to get to meet people from Brecken, there's some opportunities for you to do such. And the schedule, we have on Wednesday at 6:00 PM, we have a welcoming reception here in City Hall. You get to meet the people there. So, it'll be a formal activity. We have a progressive dinner, refreshments, dessert at the Stone Arch at 8:00 PM on Saturday, the 15th. And if you let us, your interest be known, you can join at that particular activity as far as the dessert part. And we have a farewell dinner that's going to be at the Brecken Grill. And that is on Monday, the 24th before they leave. So, we'd encourage you to get to meet some of these people from Brecken, Wales. Mentioned now about far as the Lindenburg Group coming. They've been, we've been having exchanges with the GAP Program. It's a German-American partnership program involved with the schools. And they've had four exchanges since about 1995 that they started exchanging with GAP. And we had 17 students just returned about two weeks ago from spending three weeks in Lindenburg, Germany. The fall prior to the visit, we have students from Lindenburg High School, the gymnasium, come over here and spend time with our students. So, it's a student exchange program. We have citizen groups exchange. We, we had a planning group that went over and they had a planning group come here before we signed the partnership. The, since then, we've had two formal visits where groups exchanged. A group went over to Lindenburg and their group came over. And now, starting now, they're coming over this fall, be their third group visit coming to Celine. So, it's been a very active group. We had an exchange with the Celine, or the Lindenburg Big Band. They came over and performed for us. And it's a jazz band that's from students from Lindenburg Gymnasium. And Celine Fiddlers, two years ago, went over toward Germany and spent time in Lindenburg. So, we've got some good relationships going there. How they make, they have established every third Thursday, we meet at Mac Seafood. And there's probably 20 to 25 people coming at just a free evening that we can sit and get to know each other and exchange ideas. And they have these type of activities going on in Germany quite frequently. So, it's a little bit of, I think, we are welcome to join that group, become more familiar. Another activity, we're involved with Summer Fest. And Summer Fest is coming up next weekend, next Friday and Saturday, this coming Friday and Saturday. And we have a booth where we sell bratwurst and some type of German food. And all the profit there goes into our treasury along with membership fees dues that we pay so we can host the people. And we'd like to have your patronage. We are also in need of people to volunteer. We always need extra help to help out with the booth and serve customers. We have coming, we also have the same booth for the Harvest of the Arts. And that's going to be September 23rd and 24th. And during that particular time, you'll have, that is a time when the people from Lindenburg are going to be here visiting. And we have a chance that you can mingle with them. Kind of part of the activity is for them to get to meet the residents of Celine. So, they may be dressed in a German dress or they may not, but we'll have a means of identifying them. So, step up and introduce yourself and exchange and make some friendships that way. So, these are some of the activities where you can use setup, sales, publicity, take down, help us clean up, food prep. So, that's the type they have. So, 18 visitors coming September 19th through 30th. And we're planning to provide them a great experience. So, we want you to join in some of their venues. Again, the official welcoming is going to be here at City Hall, 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 20th. They're not staying here as long a time. The Oktoberfest is the 23rd and 24th where you have a chance to meet them. And our farewell dinner that we have, dessert time for that is going, again, at the arch. And that would be about 8:00 PM on Sunday, the 25th. And our gone away farewell dinner is going to be at Cobblestone Farms. And we are welcome to join us for that and that'd be Thursday evening. All the groups that we've met, all the people we've met through the years have been fantastic, wonderful friends. They touch our hearts in many different ways. So, we'd like to share this experience with everybody. Like for you to step up, volunteer, be a part of the activities. If you want to make reservations for anything, feel free to contact me at my email address is roth@bignet.net. And the phone number's 429-4063. Or if you even probably contact City Hall, they can refer, that, refer the information to how you contact. So, you're welcome if you want to come to these activities. Let me know and we'll give you a chance to meet and make friends. So, peace through people, a global citizen diplomacy network. I truly believe in that. And if we had this type, everybody had this type of relationships as President Eisenhower envisioned it'd be, we wouldn't have the turmoil that we have going on now and been having through the years. So, this is what the whole purpose is about. And this is how you as an individual can be about it. So, promote peace through mutual respect and understanding, cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. And this is the Mayor Driscoll just mentioned far as passing away of Mike Foster, the mayor of Brecken, Wales. He was a consular the last time we, as a group, visited over there. He was fairly new to the consul and he moved up the ranks and became mayor this past, I think, March it was that he took office. He had a great idea far as when Wales hosted the Ryder Cup, he had the big dream that we're going to pick a charter plane of people from Michigan, avid golfers, to see the Ryder Cup and golf on their local courses. But the problem came is that Ryder, that Ryder Cup tickets for a whole plane load of people wasn't to be had. So, that messed up his dream. But he was a man that was very much involved as far as, with the sister city involvement and look for the future, having more involvement with him. So, at this point, I will turn the program over.
Do you want to turn that mic off? Well, actually, what, does any council members have any questions for Mr. Roth? I think it was a great presentation. Thank you very much, Jim. Just wanted to stress that it's a really great experience. I've actually been to both sister cities at least five times. Actually, I had a chance to celebrate Lindenburg's 1,012, 1,250th birthday. My son and I went over as part of their amazing pageant. They did this, it was just a huge event. And I went over and represented the community, city of Celine and helping them celebrate a very important anniversary. But it is a really great program. And I just wanted to reinforce the fact that one of the reasons that so you build so strong friendships is you host people in your homes and you go to their homes and stay. So, you actually really get a very, a great immersion in the culture and the community and the family love that is shared in the environments. And I can't recommend strongly enough. It's a really fabulous experience. So, anybody that wants to get involved with helping either of the sister city groups would be greatly welcome. So, thanks again, Jim, for that presentation. And we have another presentation, I think. Are you, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to meet Chloe. Chloe, okay. Chloe Gleickman's going to talk about hydraulic fracturing. And do you have also a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Oh, no. Well...
Jim, you got any advice on that?
Okay, well, that's all right. I can do without it.
Okay. Do you need to be connected to the Internet?
I don't think so. I think it might be the format of the file that's not working. But that's all right.
She's got to be connected to the Internet. It's trying to get the header out on the Internet.
Click on the drive. Okay, that's all right.
She can, we can maybe get you hooked up to the Internet. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that's what's needed.
Is that the issue? I don't, I don't really know. I don't know if that would actually, because I think this, the file that I have is made on a more recent version.
You just need compatibility?
Yeah, it's trying to load the... It's a newer, it's a newer version of PowerPoint than it's on the computer. And so, it needs a converter that she can get from the Internet. It's really easy if you have the converter.
This is trying to find the Internet.
Jim, do we have another laptop?
Nothing's easily accessible.
Can you touch the touchpad? Do we have half of it?
Dean, can you help?
Not supported.
Let me just try this other laptop. Whoops.
That's good. You'll need this.
Transplant.
She would need this.
So, this goes... Do not know how to work this.
All you need is this. Yeah, that's all. You don't need this because there's no sound.
Oh, how do I do this?
Yeah.
It pretty much has to be that one.
I know. I don't know, it just doesn't feel like it's going to go. It might be, but it doesn't. We're just an adapter alone.
Well, I mean, it's okay. Like, I don't... Well, I'm not going to really, it was more for...
Are your feet fingers?
I mean, I don't think that... I think it's fine. Well...
Wait, it's, our meeting's really short, so...
Yeah.
I think maybe what, if you, what you could do is, which is for the PowerPoint to the C manager and then after the meeting, and then we can possibly have everybody. But you can go through it verbally and then we can review it, you know, before, because we, as we talked about, we wouldn't be voting on this in this meeting.
Yes.
So, it's more for information.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you just want to talk to our community, that would be great. And sorry that we couldn't work out.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the technological issues. Okay, so, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Chloe Gleickman and I'm, I've been a resident in the Celine area all of my life. I'm currently a student at Central Michigan University. And as stated on our city's website, Celine has been named one of the top 100 cities. I don't know if this is...
And actually, if you're not going to walk around, you can just speak into that.
I could just use this one. Okay, so many issues. So, Celine has been named one of the top 100 cities to live in the United States. And Celine is a nationally recognized example and pace setter for other cities. So, that's why I'm here today, one of the reasons, to talk with you and urge action on the destructive process of extracting natural gas known as hydraulic fracturing or fracking. Because of Celine's reputation and recognition, we have the unique ability to take action on this contemporary issue and lead the way. And about a week ago, Detroit passed the same resolution, being the first city in Michigan to do so. So, what is fracking? Fracking is the process of drilling 8,000 to 10,000 feet down into rock formations using water, sand and over 500 chemicals to force natural gas out of rock. The mixture contains many toxic chemicals, including known carcinogens such as benzene and formaldehyde. And after a gas well is fracked, these toxic chemicals have been known to leak into drinking water supplies, contaminating it and producing wastewater that is hazardous and dangerous to dispose. There are over 1,000 examples of fracked wells that have been linked to health consequences in those areas and the number is growing. And fracking also requires millions of gallons of local water which depletes water supplies. Now, because of loopholes created by politicians with ties to the oil and gas industries, fracking remains very unmonitored and unregulated. Gas companies are exempt from legislation that protects drinking water such as the Safe Drinking Water Act and the Clean Water Act. And this creates enormous danger for the safety of our water supplies. Much of lower Michigan sits at... Much of lower Michigan sits atop shale formations, which are of great interest to these natural gas companies. In Michigan, we are home to 20% of the world's available fresh water and so it's our responsibility and duty to protect that. Our federal and state governments are not taking action on banning this destructive and risky extraction technique, so we as communities need to lead the way. A ban on fracking would protect our water supplies now and for future generations. This is a critical time in which we have been afforded the opportunity to protect a life-sustaining resource. So to not take action when we have this opportunity would be turning a blind eye to the welfare of our state and country. So let's follow Detroit's lead and become the second city in Michigan to ban fracking and set an example that can protect our community, health, and environment from the destructive and reckless practices of the profit-hungry oil and gas industries. And I have a copy of information about fracking as well as the resolution for Hope, all of you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
For you to look over. And there are similar summaries on the back table.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Appreciate it. If you, if we can figure out how to get that to work, do you want to come back and, on the 12th and do your PowerPoint?
On the 12th?
Fifteen. Sorry. I keep saying 12.
Yes, I actually had, that was a question that I had for you, is when would this be voted on?
Well, we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Which is in two weeks from tonight.
Okay, I could do the same presentation.
And have a computer, that would be, and that'll give us time to look through it and prepare any questions we might have.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Citizen comments on agenda items. The Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Anybody that would like to speak to anything on the agenda?
I'm Tramp Downtown Development Director. I just, I know that the rescheduling for the six-foot poles is on your consent agenda, but I just wanted to say that it was very difficult to make the decision to cancel the entire concert on July 28th. The weather wasn't in our favor and then when we found out that Liberty School, which is our inclement weather site, lost power at 1:00 AM and the temperature was in the eighties, when I stopped over there at 9:00 in the morning, I just could not see any way that we could make that work. So when I canceled, everybody seemed to be relieved, including me, and also was able to reschedule. I talked to the six-foot poles this afternoon and they're all set to come on August 11th, so we have 10 days to publicize the heck out of this and hopefully we'll have good weather and the opportunity to hear a good band in downtown Celine as a wrap-up to our summer music series. So I just wanted to let everybody know and hopefully everybody will join us and we'll have one night that we don't have to worry about the weather, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the agenda items? If not, we'll move on consent agenda. The file on consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. We have already deleted C-11-112 to move to the next agenda, so we have a motion to approve and adopt the items on the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Move Girba. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to her. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business item 11-113, this is the 2011 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising services. Some motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 20, 2011 memo from C Superintendent Engineer Ruble to award or not award the bids to Terra Contracting LLC in the amount of $17,824 for sanitary sewer cleaning and televising services and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute the contract documents after review and approval by the city attorney. We have a motion.
Move to award and authorize.
Move roads to award and authorize. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second law discussion. Mr. Ruble? Come on. Is that what we're doing here?
Thank you. The sewer televising program is something we do almost annually, depending on the scope of work of our street projects or sewer rehabilitation projects. As you can see, this year's projects, we had three bidders and one is, was quite low, so we went through an extra review period just to confirm that the bidder did understand the scope of work and was, to perform the work as required and they, they looked at it over a period of a couple of weeks and confirmed, yes, we do want the project and so they have agreed to then execute the contract and provide insurance, et cetera. The interesting thing here, instead of just routine maintenance work or working on regular street projects, is you can see we have the preparation work for the design of the US-12 project in, in 2014 or thereabouts. So something we coordinated with MDOT because we own the sewers and the water mains, so we're working on a scope of work on both of those improvements, trying to get things in place fund-wise and also physical infrastructure-wise before they enter their design phase. Now, they've already taken bids on the design phase, they've not awarded it yet, but we've met with at least eight of their, their bid proposers in, in preparation for that bid that they took June 29th. And then we'll be working with them through the entire design phase, make sure that our city interests are met, both as far as utilities are concerned, but traffic, you know, disruption and maintaining the, you know, the community image as well as working with community events and, you know, a proper schedule and also the streetscape aspect of it and revitalizing our streetscape uptown.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Ruble?
Just a question. You didn't mention that there were, you checked with references and anything. Where else have they done their work, et cetera?
They're, they're quite, actually, they're, they work throughout the United States, but they've, they've done work in other, other large cities in Michigan.
And then the major difference in the cost was just due to labor costs or?
No, they just, you don't feel they can do it for that price and maybe they do have lower labor costs, but they, we confirmed that they would provide the service that we required.
Yeah, I was just, because when you bolded it and printed it on here, I just wanted to make sure what you were referencing to.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ruble.
Thank you.
Our next motion is 11-114. It's an application to purchase Merish credit service for Linda Henland to acknowledge receipt of the July 27, 2011 memo from C. Andrew Campbell and the July 15, 2011 memo for Linda Henland to approve or not approve the request of Linda Henland to purchase additional credit services outlined in her application for additional credit service with a calculation dated 7/1/2011 at a cost to the employee of $58,303 and that the city council, as read, understands and approves the governing body resolution at the bottom of Mrs. Henland's application for additional credited service. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve and approve.
Move roads. Do we have a second? I'll second for discussion. Okay, questions? Mr. Campbell, you want to explain this process? How'd that?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Linda's here as well for any, if you have any questions of her, but this, the city has done similar things over the years. You may recall recently, we had one of our employees purchased five years, I believe it was last year in August or something along that. And that particular employee's purchase will actually allow them to retire earlier. And then they had also, going back, I can't remember, I apologize, the year, but a few years prior to that, they also, the same employee purchased 11 years of time as well for their pension. Again, totally out of their pocket, their cost, not the city's cost. This particular, as it shows in the support documentation that Linda put together, will not allow her to, to retire earlier. It would just increase when, when she does retire at the qualified age, then in years of service, she would receive a more, a larger payment. But again, this is solely out of her, she's paying for this out of her pocket. As I also state, as long as all the, you know, actuarial assumptions that are built in, I, I can't begin to tell you all the different nuances of the formula that they use, but, but essentially, as long as, you know, the, the life expectancy portion of the formula, you know, they add in that they're expected to live X amount of years after retirement and as long as that, as well as other portions of the, the formula are not exceeded, then there would be no additional cost to the city. Now, there, just like, just like with the other ones that this, have been approved by city council in the past, there, there is a slight, it is slight, but there is slight possibility that they could cost the city additional dollars, but, but again, based on what they figure in, the actuaries, it should be covered. So there'd be no additional cost to the city.
Your questions for Mr. Campbell? No questions?
No.
Okay. All in favor to approve and approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under 11-19 Cemetery Expansion Retaining Wall Design, we have a presentation of concept drawings for cemetery retaining wall design.
Thank you. In the packet, there are eight and a half by 11 drawings furnished by Perimeter Incorporated, which is a design firm for expanding sections 52, 53, and 54 of Oakwood Cemetery. And city staff involved with this was three of us, Diane Hill and Jeff Fordyce and myself met with Perimeter, have gone through different concepts. We wanted to show the city council that we went through a process of determining which of the concepts would work best for overall outcome. And what I've done on the one-page cover letter is I've shown that we looked at the four, at least four concepts that led us to the number four, the best one. And the number one, the first concept, of course, was our rough staff scope of work drawing, which is just based on some rough measurements out there in a first glance. But after the survey was completed by Arborland Consultants and Perimeter was able to do detailed drawings, we went through a process. We started with the second concept, Concept 3 and 3A, which is just a sort of a tweaking of three. And then what we came up was the, the number four concept, which we call the select concept because that one seemed to achieve the overall goals and objectives of getting the best number of spaces, the nicest-looking wall, and best fit for the way the sections work in the cemetery because they're at a sort of an angle to the, to the roadway, they're not perpendicular to the roadway, they're at an angle. So now finally we got the curve to meet the shape of the, the sections that are already out there that end near the road. So that, so that this way the wall can be built. It's going to be a decorative retaining wall. You have a, if you have the color rendering that's on the last page, it shows the wall. It's a, it's a Keystone brand wall and it will look quite nice. What we hope to do is select then, after the design phase, that before construction, determine, put in some varieties of earth tones that will give it some character and it should look quite nice coming down Michigan Avenue. The view you have there, of course, is the straight-on view coming down Mills Road, which is not the predominant view. The best view will be east and west on US-12. And it should add some nice character on US-12 because we don't have any feature like, like that. And then we'll carry the fence detail that we, we have there, the new fence installed several years ago, that fence detail will be carried on west towards Curtis Park. And so it should look very attractive, it'd be, it'd be functional, it'll increase the capacity of the cemetery, increase the balance of this perpetual care fund and also at the same time provide, provide a service to, to the residents for some time to come as far as a resting place for loved ones.
Any questions for Mr. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions, Mr. Ruble. The first of which, I can assume the answer, but I want to ask it anyways. All of the financing for this proposed project would be derived from the city's perpetual cares fund and not the general fund, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And then my second question is, assuming that this motion gets approved, and my assumption is that it will, what's the timeline or timeframe for this project moving forward and when you hope to come back to get final approval from city council?
Okay, we're, we're actually close to getting into the final design stage.
Okay.
Okay, also tomorrow I'll contact Perimeter. They are already, have already drafted up the preliminary plan for the select, ready to jump right into the final, which is only some details and then finishing off the bid documents. Then it'll be bid. The bid will come back to city council to award the construction bid.
Right.
And that'll include the wall, and the wall installing the crypts and installing the fence. At the next meeting, hopefully, we'll have the award to purchase the crypts because we purchase them separately.
Right.
And then we arrange coordination between the contractor and the producer of the crypts. And so if we can then get the crypts produced within a 30 or so day period after that's awarded, then, and the construction bids come in, we get that awarded probably in September sometime, September. We, we could build it in late October.
So, so in theory, it could be completed during this calendar year?
Correct.
Okay.
And for the meeting, when we award the construction, I will have the spreadsheet showing the cost-benefit analysis and we will also let them, at that time, have a preliminary idea of what the rates will be that'll offset both the cost of the payment and put another amount of money into the perpetual care fund.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Law, Mr. Rhodes.
My question's answered then.
Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Ruble, do you know what the maximum height of this retaining wall is?
The, at the ma, well, the maximum height won't be realized probably until MDOT does the 2014 project. Now, we, we've had, we've sent the preliminary plan to MDOT for comment, we haven't heard anything back, but what we've done is designed the project so that the walkway can be moved away from US-12 a safe distance, at least eight feet or more, for a 10-foot pathway that we're going to try to get either installed with the 2014 project or with a separate grant thereafter. But the idea is to move the wall, the walkway away. So we're, we're designing the wall so that the foundation goes deeper. Now, so at first, when it's built, it, it won't appear as large as it would be if the walkway is moved back and the bank's taken down. So it'll, it'll be almost 14 feet tall once the walkway's moved and the bank's lowered. But right now, we're just building the walk, the, the wall, but not really lowering the bank as far as it could be with the, as, as it would be in 2014.
So part of the wall will be buried at present time?
Probably a few feet. So you, it might be 12-foot tall at the tallest point, but as you can see, it, it starts at zero on both ends, east and west, and then it gets, it follows the grade until it reaches the midpoint or two-thirds point, and then it's 14, 12 to 14 feet tall and then it tapers. So you'd have some vertical appeal to it as well as the, the horizontal, you know, shape.
And will there be some allowances made to accommodate drainage from the soil behind this wall when it's first built?
Yes, yes. It's part of the, the manufacturer has standard details built into the plan and then we also have a drainage system for the crypts themselves that's, just as we designed the crypts in 2003, they have a drainage system underneath them as well.
Okay, and if I understood the drawing correctly, most of those crypts are going to be doubles?
Yes, 71 doubles, 17 singles.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I, I just had a comment about, you know, this is the second time you mentioned the 2014 MDOT plan and my understanding is that is subject to funding that has not yet been identified. So is that going to be a problem if, unless there's some revenue increase somewhere around transportation funding that, that, my understanding is that project won't go. Will that negatively impact this project or can you wait till 2015 or? I mean, they were talking of doing that in 2012 at one point, so it's going to push back a lot. So I guess my question is, will that impact this project in any way negatively?
No, we, I mean, the way it's planned now, it'll blend with it. You know? So we anticipate moving the pathway. We're building the wall foundation deep enough so it won't be impacted.
Okay. So you, you can do it as a phase. That's what you're saying. Mr. Girba?
What's the anticipated lifespan of that wall? Just looking forward to potentially, we haven't to fix it or replace it, 30 years for it? Just looking forward to potentially, we having to fix it or replace it, 30 years, 40 years?
No, I'm, I'm thinking much more than that, I'm thinking it would, it'd last a real-
Because I mean, the walls are failing on the other side of Monroe Street.
Because the way it's built, it's anchored, it's got a permanent anchoring system, it goes back in the back though, which is limestone, and basically it's all inert, and so, I mean, it's like rock, it's going to last as long as rock, basically.
Further discussion? Mr. Rom?
I would just remind my colleagues that this whole plan and concept is derived from the Cemetery Task Force recommendations that were presented, and I believe unanimously approved in February. And I say that with some regret, because our former council colleague, Pat Ivey, was really instrumental in adopting that plan, and I think he'd be very pleased with this proposal. And in addition to adding more space in Oakwood Cemetery, I think that the wall that's illustrated in the second-to-last page of our packet not only serves a practical purpose, but is also aesthetically appealing. And so I'm excited that we're making progress on the Task Force recommendations, and I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of the motion.
Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, we don't, excuse me, I'm sorry. We need a motion. We had the presentation.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel.
I'll move to approve and to proceed.
Second. Move more, a second to her. Is there any discussion? Sorry about that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under discussion items, we have commission committee reports from council members. Mr. Law?
The planning commission last week, my notes, agreed to give a site plan approval for an expansion of the Libier facility for 33,000 square feet, additional space. Certainly, this is a great news for Celine and the city, and of course, for the company involved. They've been a great partner in the city, and have been a really strong foundation for the city and its employment base, so that we look forward to seeing come to fruition. Also, the, we, the commission agreed to give a six-month extension for the clean getaway car wash that has not been completed, it's been sitting pretty dormant for the last many years, that's near the Renshler Farm. And the owner came to us and did indicate that there are two people that have approached him that are interested in buying it, so there's hope that with this extension for the site plan, that it will allow the sale of the car wash and hopefully move forward with it in some manner.
Are there any other reports? Mr. Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission met on July 20th, and while I unfortunately was not able to attend, do have some notes that were passed on to me from that meeting. Janice Bubrin and Megan Bonfeglio from the County Resources Commission met with the members of the Environmental Commission and discussed ways in which those two organizations might work together to continue the mission of both of them, and so we'll be having some ideas come forward in the future. The next electronic waste event, looks like it's going to be held on November the 5th, so those of you who have computers and aren't working right, save them for November the 5th, and we'll have that recycle event. That meeting, I guess, did end up being adjourned early due to some environmental concerns, their conditioning wasn't working on that side of the building, and so they tabled a fair number of things that had been intended to be talked about. And then the Environmental Commission will have a presence at Summerfest, will have a tent up, and continue to hand out information as we have in the past at the farmer's market. And a reminder to those of you who are associated with nonprofit organizations, and that is that you can reserve space at that Environmental Commission tent at the Saturday morning farmer's market to hand out information and literature, and that reservation is done by a contact in Conde de Haan, city employee. And I think, let's see, the last item I had for that group is just a reminder to all of you that I had requested input from each of you on the Environmental Commission's mission and other activities within the city, as the commission begins to review how we function and where we fit in, how best to discharge our mission within the city, and I've not gotten any responses back yet, so by the time of our next meeting, if I still have not received any responses, I will assume that all of you are in favor of our current alignment. That's it for me.
Okay, are there any other commissioner committee reports? Mr. Gervin?
Mayor, the Historic District Commission met last week to discuss window replacements for a house on South and Ivory Street. The decision came out not as necessarily in favor of the proposal, but we've recommended back to the individual, the homeowner, to talk with our staff and determine if there's a better procedure, a way they can handle it. Concerns were with maintaining some of the original and complying with the federal government's guidelines for historic districts. The other question that had come up is that they're interested in knowing if there are other additional areas in the city that want to expand or want to look into being historic districts. At this point, there hasn't been any more discussions have occurred on other areas that may be able to qualify, and they're wondering if other individuals are interested. Of course, it does take the approval of the homeowners and such to go forward with that, so if there are individuals or businesses that want to look at that, the Historic Commission is very interested in doing that, and hoping to partnership with the new Celine Historic Downtown Association, so that, basically, working with them to promote not only the recognition of our historic areas and homes and such, but also on how to promote us and work with them to promote the downtown and the commission itself.
Any further committee or commission reports? Do we have reports or announcements? I guess I'd just say, as Mr. Trapp mentioned, we have the Summerfest coming up, few days of activities and fun, bring your family, call it Celine's Family Reunion, talked about it, a little bit about it in July. Is there any other? Mr. Rhodes?
I have an announcement from the Celine Area Historic Society, and that is that on August the 12th and 13th, the Renshler Farm Museum will be participating in the US 12 garage sale, longest garage sale in the country, some 200 miles long, and people do in fact spend two or three days just traveling up and down Michigan Avenue, enjoying the various sales. And then the other item is that we're going to have a vintage truck and tractor show at the Renshler Farm on August the 20th, and it'll be from 11 to 4:00. And a request has been made for City Council, Mayor and staff to attend, if at all possible, for a photo op at noon on that date. Thank you.
Okay, are there other report, and the Summerfest is downtown, I didn't mention that. Keep people to know that. So there's a website for the Summerfest, Celine Summerfest. Are there any other reports or announcements? No? Mr. Campbell, you want to talk about the water plant and all the excitement last week?
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. Well, you know, you go on vacation and all happens, but, but yeah, for, for some that didn't know, that obviously, this past Wednesday and Thursday, we had what I would call torrential downpours. I've been informed we've had in excess of eight inches in that approximately 12-hour period, and essentially, my understanding, a 100-year flood calculation is based on about a four or five-inch rain event over a 24-hour period, so that was about twice that, so a lot of water. We did have some flooding in our basement here in City Hall, on the City Hall side, as well as police side, so we're, great efforts of staff to get on that. Ms. Hill came in and helped out, as well as other staff members, Mickey Joe Bennett and Jeff Fordyce, Sergeant Jay Bassel, am I forgetting anybody?
Eric. Eric Grossman?
Oh, yeah, Eric Grossman from DPW, Joel from, Joel from, Roden Ball from DPW came in and helped get things secured right then and there, and we do have some ongoing things that we're working with, but, so certainly appreciate, very appreciative of a great effort from the group. Also, the, this was on, that was Wednesday, Thursday, then Saturday evening at the water plant, not the wastewater treatment plant, but the water plant, a down power line, we believe, pretending that, not positive, but we believe it tripped, the down power line tripped, the, which I'm going to refer to my notes, because I always get the word wrong, but it's variable frequency drive, and I apologize, I think I put virtual frequency drive, the information I sent out to you all, so I apologize, but, because we do the reverse osmosis to clean and soften our water, drinking water, before we send it out, and the variable frequency driver, the VFD, and the reverse osmosis unit number two has failed, and so we're trying to repair that right now, working with a group to do that. If we, if we can get it, that particular part repaired and up and running, we'll be back online, that RO unit will be back online by Friday. If not, if we have to go and order a new, complete new variable frequency drive, then we're talking about a four- or five-week window to get it done, to get it manufactured and sent us and installed. What does this mean? Certainly no, absolutely no health concerns, it just means that our water's not going to be as soft as it typically is. So, and if, and if it, if we are out of the dry spell, which I don't know that we are or aren't, but if the less water that's used, then the softness will be there, so if people aren't having to water their lawns, for instance, they'll be more, the hardness won't be as bad as with all the water going on, so, so that's kind of, we're working on that, hoping to move that forward, and hopefully we'll be able to make the, a simple repair and get it back online by Friday.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell?
Not a question, just to comment, if I could, the Environmental Commission has rain barrels on sale for $45, so you can take advantage of the natural soft rainwater.
We didn't have any reports of sewer backups or anything because of the rainfall?
We have had some turned in, some claims turned in, we'll turn those over to our liability carrier. If we were found at fault, then we would cover those, if we're not, then we won't.
Any other questions for Mr. Campbell? Thank you very much. Any further discussion items? Not, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizens may come forward at this time, may comment a question to City Council, this public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person, and we would like to speak as requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Good evening. None of you would be on my cheering team, because I can't hear you, and I think other people would agree, that's why you got mics. We had a relay for life this weekend, and the survival lap was wonderful, the luminary was absolutely marvelous. I appreciate so many people being a survivor that was there. Glenn Law walked a couple laps, and of course, we had Diane Hill, the cook, and I don't know who else gave their time, I'm sorry, we didn't have more publicity as far as the city, and hopefully we'll have more next year. It is important, it's amazing who you see on the survival's lap that you know, and it is a very good event, and hopefully next year it will be bigger. It was very warm, but there was a lot of kindness, and it was great. Cemetery, being this is a historical cemetery, maybe it would be nice to transfer this odd information that you're proposing to the Cemetery Historical Society, being it is noted under the Historical Commission for the county or state. Other thing is trust and agency, the money you have for the cemetery board, or the cemetery, is basically in trust. I'm concerned about the broken tombstones, and it'd be nice to have those look nice. Retaining walls, I'll leave to Mr. Rhodes. I know retaining walls can be interesting, because with the thawing and freezing, you can have a retaining wall with the impact of the water and the dirt, that you have a, it looks great for 10 years, it'll look good for my lifetime, but I'm looking forward. And all the flowers we put in over the years in every park and place, and the evergreens in front of this city hall, therefore not. So I'm hoping that the costs and estimates will come back before it's approved, and maybe the Cemetery Board of Appeals, just to give them some knowledge, as long as we have time. Bowley Bridge, I was at Tony and Liz Elston when they were the mayor, so I went over a couple of years, and, but the Bowley Bridge, if you notice, as he said, everything went underwater at Curtis Park, Milpon Park, it's because it's a flood plain. Looked up bridge. Bridge is a span over water. The Bowley Bridge that I think you have voted to 125,000, but as Glenn says, only, you know, we're going to get some grant money, and, but bridges are for overwater. This is the third one, and it will not maintain, if you notice how much it goes underwater. And I wish they kind of addressed that again.
Thank you. Is there any?
Good evening, Mayor Driscoll, City Council. My name is Hillary Gleickman from Celine, Michigan. I just wanted to encourage you all to review the material that Chloe provided you on hydraulic fracturing or fracking, encourage you to review it, to address any questions you might have to her, she's the expert on it, but I agree with her in her proposal to ban that practice in the, in the city, being the second community or city within the state to do so, followed behind Detroit, which she said passed that last week, or a couple of weeks ago. Fracking, hydraulic fracturing, has been shown on more than a few coincidental occasions to cause some serious health risks and detrimental impacts to a community, to a region. These are documented occasions, and as I say, they are numerous, and accidents happen frequently with some very devastating, long-lasting impacts to an area. Thank you.
I'm Kirk Gleickman, I just wanted, you know, Chloe pretty much summed up the discussion on fracking, but I know it was a speech, and you don't have what she wrote down, so one of the things that Hillary just said was about how fracking has had devastating effects in certain communities, and it's very prevalent in Pennsylvania, West Virginia, and other parts of the country, and what has happened, I just learned about this six months ago, and have been studying it, and you can look in the materials, and they'll have good references that you can look up, but what I learned is that the Clean Water Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act have been amended in 2005. Those were the acts that safeguarded our drinking water and our water supplies, and there specifically is a statement in there about safeguarding our water supplies from injection of fluids into the ground. And in 2005, the federal government amended those acts, and the words in the Safe Drinking Water Act specifically exempt the fracking industry from that act, and I hadn't never realized that the federal government would do something like that. I thought all industry was, you know, covered the same way, but it's just very interesting to me that that happened, and it made me aware, so it's up to the communities to protect themselves from, you know, get their aquifers and their water supplies being contaminated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Guida, I've lived in Celine my whole life, and I am in support of the fracking ban, because I am very concerned about our drinking water. I don't want fracking to interfere like it has in Pennsylvania. If any of you guys have seen Gasland, the documentary, it's very tragic, they can light their waters, their water from their sink on fire, and that's, that's not okay. Gas in your water system that kills people, that's not good for your health. So I am in support of the ban on fracking.
Thank you. Is there any further comments? Not, our next meeting is August 15, if I was corrected, regular meeting, and then the 12th and the 19th of September, and I don't believe we have any more city business, we have a motion adjourned at 8:40?
So moved?
Second.
Girbert, second. Morrow, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.